We'll go down here to Rob's here for the moving repeater from Cherokee to Highway 11.
Did you guys get the quote?
I got a quote from, yes.
I brought it just in case, so. I kind of apologize because I'm just.
It was last matter, man. I mean, I got the quote on Friday and I thought, I didn't get it on the agenda and then come in and it's on the agenda. Somebody's looking out for something.
Well, we were, I didn't, I was, the last advisory board meeting. Colton had changed today and then I changed my plans to make it work. And then they pushed back and I was already out, I was already booked hotels and I was like, yeah. And it just been, it was just, so the last meeting, the second to last meeting, I was unable to attend and then, then when I got there, then like, hey, where do we have this repeater? And I'm like, I just kind of dropped the ball on it. So I told Jason that, I'm assuming we're good, this going on to move it over to that other site.
We were under a meeting this morning and.
Yeah. And then, then I just wanted to see if we could look at, at go ahead and get in a prize from Jason to put one in McWillie also. You know, my, my, my deal is, is our southern side's need that. And, and I talked to John at.
Gultry.
At Gultry, you know, and he's even, and still in agreement, but I'd like to see some redundancy. I'd like to have two repeaters so that if one was to come down, we had another one for sure. I mean, it's going to help me down here, but it's going to help both ways on that. And he said that that cost would be between eight and $10,000. If we, if the county was ready for a solid number, then he would, because he'd have to go to McWillie and, and check out what all's going to take to do so.
What my big question is on that, and I guess, you know, we could move the box and the antenna that we got on this elevator. Because what I talked to him about was not moving that box, just moving the.
Yeah, we're just going to take that equipment, take the equipment because to get the box down, we're going to have to get a crane. We talked about jibbing it down and my, my only concern with jibbing it down is I've, I've got to get, I've got to get rigged to not damage that box coming around the side of it. And the weight of that, I could do it if it wasn't so heavy, but we thought if we, our opinion was leave it there, the box.
To prove, to prove.
We'll put that system there.
See how it works.
Yeah, and then when it, if you allow us to put one at McWillie, then we'll get the crane one day, pick that box.
And if we move that antenna and the box down to that other elevator, it'd save a lot of money.
Yeah, we could, we could just, you know, relocate the box. Of course, and then he said with the base, with the repeater, that we would buy one that's digital capable, but it had to switch analog and to run analog, it would, everything would run on the same frequency. So it would just.
But the concern I have with the other repeater at this time, just so we're all on the same page, is every stinking radio would have to come out and be reprogrammed. The repeater cost isn't that big a deal, but if you put it up and the frequency and then all the radios, it isn't working.
No, it's the same frequency.
Same frequency.
So it would be.
It would be the same frequency. To run analog.
And they can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, good. That would, okay.
Same frequency. Now, in the future, and I just spoke to Jason this morning, so I got my score straight. You know how that goes. So he said, he said that we'd run on same frequency so we wouldn't have to apply for another frequency.
I didn't think you'd do that.
That's to run analog and it'll be a repeater that's capable of going digital in the future. But it'll run analog and then we don't have to change anything. It just all, everything stays the same and that, that's what we.
Well, it'll be interesting when we move this one to see what it does for you down there.
Yeah.
That's what I want to see is how it's going to react and.
Sure. And, but he said he could get us a solid number if you wanted him to, but he just said eight to 10. If you want to, and his suggestion was to, to leave the box up there just because we don't need it here. And then if we need it, then we'll to go to the other one, then, then get the crane to come pick that one, drive to that site, put it at that site. Try to, we'd leave, we would leave our box up there, but.
Yeah.
And we can get it down. It's just be the cost of a crane. If we did it now, then we'd be looking at crane twice. If we leave it for, if we do that, then.
I knew you guys would figure so.
If you guys are talking eight to 10,000 though, you're going to have to give out for written quotes on it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's see how this works and, and I think we're going to find out it's going to work better than we think.
Yeah. Well, that's just, that's where we wanted to get, because the reason we're bringing this other one up is because if we used to do that, if it wasn't for that cabinet, we wouldn't even be talking about the other one really right now. But we're talking about abandoning it for a period of time just to see, you know.
And another one works, yeah.
The cabinet's $1,800, he said, and, and just to come pick it, that's going to hurt. You know what I mean? That, that cost will be, but if we had picked it and relocated it, it would be.
The thing of it is, if we get that moved out there and it works good, I think it will. Co-op has a crane in, maybe once a year.
Exactly. That'd be perfect.
And all we got to do is just be patient and we'll get it done.
When it comes in, then just tell them, hey, if you got a crane, could we take this cabinet down? Super. That'd be perfect. So I guess I'm, are we wanting to move forward with getting this relocated then?
Yeah.
How, so how, what are you looking at on this schedule?
Oh, I can get it to Jason, but I'm, I would think that we try to do it for last week in November.
I want to go on business.
Are you talking, are you talking this one?
Yeah, this is the relocate.
It could relocate.
Isn't this a surprise for the relocate?
I like to be out there when they do that.
Yeah, okay.
I like to be out there when they do that because last time I forgot. Oh, I'm on TV.
Yeah, you are. But just wanted on my, whatever, you're talking about wanting to go that way too, that's what I got to understand.
With Willie, just Gultry are interested if this doesn't cure their farther south.
Southeast corner, yeah.
Yeah, they're just asking to, to be able to take care of it at McWillie also. We feel that McWillie will.
I think so too. You've got to get it to, well.
The bottom line is it's going to give us some redundancy too, you know.
I've been around my life and I only first put radios in, you couldn't hear nothing.
We wouldn't have to put, we wouldn't have to put a generator, well, this one don't have a generator. It's got a battery backup and.
Have you already talked to Co-op?
That's, I believe they talked to him probably three years ago when everything was okay. We'd have to talk with him again. That's been a long time ago that we, I've been kicking this soapbox.
Well, we need, yeah, I know you can't hear it down over there and sometime over there. I knew that forever. And they can't hear me up north. I can hear everything they say.
I didn't know we could put two of them on the same chair. Make them work. That's interesting.
Yeah.
Go on analog.
Yeah.
They can do anything.
Well, it's amazing what they can do today.
So, what do you say?
So we move the repeater out there and see how it works and we'll go from there.
I second that.
What? I can't be one of those.
Just let me know when you decide to go and I'll put it on my calendar, be out there to help whatever I can do.
The board was out of the sheriff, but if this is not all sheriff, then according to my county general.
I know they don't keep in the bill because they got me out of county.
Yeah, that'll work.
That's good. Can I still have, you're not going to make it top of the list?
I have one. You can have it if you want.
I just need the one attached to PM.
You can have it, I guess, make you.
Should you make the motion?
Yeah.
You second? All in favor?
You're good.
Okay, what about the installations with Peter?
Do you want to just wait?
Well, I'd like to wait on it to see how this works.
We got to get bids on that.
Right.
Yeah, we'd like to do it close till we get.
Okay, no action this time.
No action.
Anything else you want to tell us?
I just appreciate you taking care of us. That's the biggest thing. I mean, it's been, it's been a long road for me. I'll admit that I've been on the edge of just.
Clever, a long time.
Yeah, you know what I mean? I mean.
Yeah.
It's going to help you too.
Well, it's an emergency issue and we can't talk to them. And I mean, really need to be able to hear.
Well, it may surprise us out there, but I think it's a better repeater than the sheriff got, the one you guys have.
Yes, I think you're absolutely right. That's better than sheriff's repeater.
Yeah, my only concern was just the redundancy of it, you know. Better than that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to be a real horror.
Thanks for bringing her up a little further down there.
Well, because this electronics, yeah, you might as well ship me out.
We'll change your bill, Rob.
No problem. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, ma'am. You don't want us to come out for the fun?
Don't you want to stay out?
No, that's okay. Unless you need me.
No.
We always need you.
We might need you. Be a bouncer. Wait a minute. Oh, you didn't have any problem, did I? There are timber.
I had a problem with my printer on the backside.
Yeah, the printer didn't want to work.
Lenina, could I see that quote for our moving repeater?
That's just practically identical to the one that we moved the sheriff's repeater. That figures real close. I don't remember the exact figure, but that's about.
Thank you.
Well, we have more invested than that other because we moved the generator and all that.
Yeah.
What's that?
To just move it out.
That's Rob Sims?
Yeah, that's, that's the same figure.
Robin? Rob?
Rob, R O B.
And you know, the good thing is that'll be, that'll be generator backup out there in his and in yours.
Yeah.
I think that was there.
I know. I don't want it to be long, but it sure did. I did it three times.
It's the idiot running the machine. I mean, I never did.
That's what the, when he came out, let's try it again and try it again.
I didn't say to add that.
I don't even bite those things, no.
Heck you don't.
I didn't have to keep track of the number of papers. You all would have never know that stuff.
Right.
You kind of got to have to keep track of the number of papers, so.
Very good. There you go.
I don't make it the paper.
The what?
I want to go J word for word on that one.
Thank you.
I hope you got it.
And they're going to read it and go, oh, man, I didn't say that, did I?
Did you hear me honk at you? Was you driving the bus?
You what?
Was you driving the bus Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Did you hear me honk at you?
I heard somebody honk. I didn't know who it was.
I was at the grocery store. You drove by and honked?
Yeah, they were right in that, yeah.
I saw that bus Saturday. It was here Saturday too, wasn't it?
Yeah, my, my daughter brought her down there to junior high tournament.
That is a nice bus.
No, maybe my son-in-law drove it that day. I don't remember.
I was like.
He drove on Thursday.
I had to take a double take because I don't know that I've ever seen it.
Good thing there wasn't, Dyke's wasn't inhaling when I come through because I was hurrying to go home.
Which time? The first time you met me or this last time?
No, the, the first time I met you, I was kind of, I tried to keep up with my son-in-law on the old bus. I said, you go ahead. So I went out running, I'm running my foot. He said, you know, that old bus will still run. I said, yeah, I had my cruise set on 70, 72. We went to Burlington.
That's good enough for a ticket. Where's? Admitted on camera.
My son-in-law couldn't find a cruise control, he said.
There's not one.
No, he didn't. Where's the cruise control? I said, it's on the dash on the right-hand side. Well, it's dark and he'd never driven that bus. I said, well, you had her. Oh, he said, I just put her flat on the floor. That way I knew.
Aren't you glad your child was in it?
Oh, yeah, we drive them buses.
Well, they've been in buses.
No, I, the coaches do, but I, no, I will not get a bus driver's license because I don't put up them kids all the time.
You know, the only thing bad about that new bus here, you get over on Simmeron, I cannot get to 75 instead of going down. It's governed out of 74.
Isn't it?
Yeah. I can't quite get up to what that is over there.
That truck I had in Larry yet was governed out of about 78. I sent it to Miami one time. The driver came back and he said, I was, he said, your truck won't even run the speed limit. Why don't, it will look over.
They won't let me work on it. I could change that.
I'll make a motion to approve. All in favor?
Okay, any need, mighty mouth.
You can take whichever one you want.
Take the mailman.
Give him an award.
We're going to do that this pick.
And a huge pile for the sheriff.
What do you do all this for?
The three blind mice.
You almost took a long mouth.
Leaky wife, she didn't cause mole, Larry and Curly.
I'm bored, buckets. There's something about three days straight can't be closed. Not whether it looks changed or not.
Those are twos.
Twos. You said twos.
That's you.
That's twos. I was in my twos.
That is A dry Q.
That's it. It's both of them, I can't.
Just sign the top one. Top one's kind of generally others for sure.
Okay, I'd have helped you, but I.
I just have to sign one?
Good. This is all one?
I got county general and sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I couldn't write that one. I didn't get my damn mail because I want to see the paper.
Take it till Saturday. If you get your paper.
We go over come Saturday. It comes Saturday morning.
Getting good, but.
Huh?
You mean you don't get it by Thursday?
I mean, your paper. You never know, Thursday or, no, yeah, it's sometimes Thursday and Friday, which.
Will your overtures come out? What's that about this?
Hell, yeah.
He said it. Mom doesn't get this till Friday.
Ali's the only one.
I got a building box, got to go out today.
Everything else goes.
Might be late.
That's right.
Don't worry, he'll call in Academy.
I better call Laura and make sure.
We're seven class now. We used to be first class. But I'll get the Fairview paper too and you never know when it'll come Thursday, when it'll come Friday and then next week.
See if it's hell in, we just leave off the side and they, they can pick it up and then it's, you should, they can be getting a lot quicker than that.
But you know, it just depends who's hauling the mail because sometimes, you know, I mean, when you have to haul that person with you, it's about to mail around, they have to drive it right. Cheating, so.
You know, I mean, we were told there's been times where if that's something on that part of the route is a newspaper, they'll just deliver it the next day.
Oh, great.
Who's coming to Cherokee every Wednesday and pick it up?
I'll move, get the blanket, I'll search it.
All in favor?
No road crossing.
Monthly officer's report.
One straggler.
One straggler? Is it the clerk?
Secret.
It's clerk, all right.
It's clerk, but it's not mine.
Court clerk. What do I do this time?
My eyes are trying to just contact.
What? Got any?
My eyes are trying to just see if it's the contact.
Hey, help. Do you know we got a bovine dog to take the garment today?
That's the one he's a phone.
Did you, you got them from? Let's see.
No, they're good. It's just my eyes haven't, I haven't had them for, I haven't.
Well, I was just in a meeting and I had this light came on. Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that, but I forgot.
Take them a little bit down.
Actually, they fit really well and they feel good on my own. It's just.
Well, thank, thank.
The depth perception.
Yeah, and all that.
Have you got some help to do that?
Can you see up here?
Yeah, I see. Eyes glasses.
I know, but your eyes.
But I can reach your hat.
Did I ask you about it? For some reason, my husband wasn't there yet, so he was at my birthday party. He snuggled up on my lap.
You're near, you're near.
I'm going to get glasses.
Really?
I got one.
Is it blue ones?
Even my hand right here would be.
No, yeah.
I got one for seeing over there, one for reading.
Here, sit up to the right. We came and picked it.
I'll just tell you that, that doctor said.
Move Jeff. He might be off your report. I'll second it.
All in favor? Was Newton there though or one of the others?
Whoever his assistant, whoever, I forget the tone of his name.
Corrective private property access, even for district number two. Northeast quarter five, 26,老 tree,老 tree.
There's a copy if you'll sign that for Stan, then I'll just give him a copy of it. This is just, we had, they had northwest quarter on there and it was the northeast quarter.
It ain't the first time it's been done either. Believe me, I've known about it.
Can you large this, move this over?
That's what she said.
I know.
I'll make a motion to approve. All in favor?
I can get all the things.
Resilience for 2018 and local cooperative agreement of circuit engineering district A.
There's a resolution for the interlocal London. You guys need to designate a.
There's two separate.
Bet you hundred dollar bet on it. Randy Roberts keeps sending deals out to me blank, sending in about who's going to inspect bridges.
We were, those.
I know.
Lenina, can I see the road crossing permit?
Oh, road crossing permit, there's no, there's no road crossing permits.
Oh, very, very, okay.
No, no road crossing.
Sorry.
That's fine. I wasn't even, I hadn't seen what you said.
It's Monday.
It's Monday.
Do you remember an alternate? Said you did a member and an alternate.
I'm going to have to be phenomenal someone else. So you phenomenal someone else?
Yeah. I've got a meeting over there since we have three on Thursday.
I'll make mine too.
Hmm? I'm Mike Whiting.
Make motion.
Got to have members. We're going to make a motion on the interlocal.
If you're unanimous, tell me.
Need a.
Motion on that one too.
First and a second, alternate though.
Dan.
What?
I'm first and second, right? Get it right, Jay.
Yeah. You're first. You always are first, don't you?
So what's the girls telling me?
Either one's in wheelchairs or one's in a bug.
One's in the wheelchair and bug.
Is that alternate? I have to stand as first alternate.
Okay.
How many alternates you need?
There's only three.
Needs to, okay. Jay, hey.
Ain't much choice there.
All in favor?
Can I put you in as a second alternate? Am I putting you as such a second alternate?
You got one of the first alternates and second.
Okay, who's second of all that?
Shana's.
Yeah.
Standing.
I have you down as.
First.
Your motion.
Okay, then, one of these guys second.
Your powers of deduction are in power.
I said all in favor. All in favor? Is that all done?
Got it.
Cancellation of appropriation and or request for transfer of our three county general capital outlay, $49,000.
On the budget, we had honor estimate each, we had put a hundred thousand on our.
Capital outlay.
County general capital outlay. When he did the budget, he put it down as a thousand. I had already put 50% in there, so I had already put in 50,000.
Right.
And then when I was going through and putting in the second part of the budget, I went, oh, my goodness. So I called Betty and he says, let's just do it as a cancellation of appropriation. He says, if we need that money, we decided to do a big project in county general, we can always transfer that money back in there. He says, but let, he said, it'll just be easier than this, having to amend the budget, send it back to the capital, everything else. So we are just making a cancellation of appropriation, I mean, appropriation of that 49,000 and we'll just leave a thousand dollars in there then.
Don't move. So just cancel it.
All in favor?
We don't want to send anything to the capital. They can't even figure out what this seven week now at $30,000 a day.
We have that two week protest period and it ends this week. And so if we send something down there, then that extends in another two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Your treasure and your assessor.
So I was going to say, ladies and class of home, I.
Yeah, they will have a board there. But it was like, well, you told me a thousand, I went, no, 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 I told you a hundred thousand. And he says, oh, we're going to figure out why here. I even when we went back over the, over the number, she said a hundred thousand. I'm sorry. No, we do. Just tell me how it fits up.
Are you still sitting up to? Still asleep?
Yeah, just got her laptop later.
Do we do that?
Yes, I got the motions on this one. This one is when Shayna and Cheyenne, Shayna and.
Shanaya.
Shanaya, thank you, started. I just did not get their matching and Shayna's insurance transferred over to county general. And so that's doing, that's just doing a, it's not a transfer, it's a correction of error. So we'll get that money back in the emergency management, their benefits, and then back into the assessors part-time.
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah.
All in favor? That's new. I want to see, I want you to have some exercise. I made a motion for the second.
Yeah, I did.
We all, thanks.
I'm right there underneath the line, Toby. I'm sort of tall, kind of halfway down, sign underneath the line.
Oh. About fall asleep back there. You're about to fall asleep.
I'm tired.
You go ahead and take a nap. We don't care. We'll wake you up on time.
It's a Monday.
Okay, they want to create a account for monetary donations for emergency management. I called Betty. He wants it's called a gift fund. So the auditors said that it was okay to do this. So we're going to create a account that says emergency, it'll be a cash account that will just carry over emergency manager gift fund.
All right, on that fund, I'd like it to be called a donation fund.
Budget maker said gift fund.
Well, the auditor said it could be donation. I have a copy of the email so y'all can read it from Jesse. I have a copy for each one of you if you'd like to.
The budget maker, Betty Carroll called back down there and talked to Cheryl and Betty said Cheryl and him agreed on gift fund.
They are one and two the same, but again, I reached out to Jesse and he, on that second page, Dan and Jay, on that second page, it goes in detail about the donation fund and that they have changed something with the cash accounts. And then in order to receive donations, the account must be titled and named donations for it to be suffice. Now, we can table the issue and I can get some more research done on it and reach out to different people. Because I actually had two items that I needed on the agenda today. One was to.
You don't have to approve that, you don't have to approve that check.
Again, on Jesse's email, it says that I have to.
Betty said you didn't have to because it will go, it'll go to an appropriation to the.
I'm not sure who breaks who on the auditors versus the budget makers.
It will come back to them as an appropriation and they'll approve it then.
Because again, Jesse said that it had to be done in an open meeting, that the auditor, that the commissioners.
It will as an appropriation when.
Accept the donation in an open meeting.
When they accept it, they'll accept it in an, in an open meeting and the appropriation. When they accept it, they'll accept it in an, in an open meeting and the appropriation.
Provision in place for that, before you.
You have to create the account. You can't accept anything until the account is created. Once you put it into the account, then these guys will approve it in an open meeting with the appropriations.
Okay, so just all in one, not two separate?
Well, it'll still be two separate.
Accepting the check is what I'm recommending.
Right.
So, again, he. I don't know what exactly the difference is on the donation account versus a gift fund, but that's just what, I reached out to Jesse, and that's what he had told me. I never spoke to the budget maker. And the reason for this is, we had a check given to, given from Farm Credit Down in Enid to be part of our task force meeting on Tuesday, to give out door prizes and things like that. So they wanted to write a check, and this was to alert her for me, because other emergency managers that I've spoke to in other counties get quite a bit of donation funds, so I wanted to figure out how we could set that up, and, uh, do things in the future with folks that wanna donate for specific things.
I don't know why Buddy didn't talk to Jesse. I told him, Buddy, that it was Jesse that she talked to. I don't know. He called back and said that he had talked to Cheryl, oh, to Sherry.
So what you say it was supposed to be called, the fund?
Donation fund, it says here, as far as putting money in county general, there's a new chart of accounts that won't allow donations to be deposited.
You can't put it in county general.
And he said, there's a, but my, my accounts, at, at emergency management, you know.
Your accounts are county general.
Exactly.
But this is a cash account, so it's not gonna be part of county general.
Well, no, but it'll be under emergency manager.
Right, but it's not under county general.
Well, but he said chart of accounts, new chart of accounts, that won't allow donations to be deposited anywhere but a donation fund. So with that said, I don't wanna deposit donation money into another account if this is the case.
Well, we got this signed, we got this signed by an auditor to put it in a budget account, don't you move.
No, it's not going into a budget account.
It's a cash account, not an annual.
I meant a cash account, but the name ordered to be donation.
Yes, sir.
That's what he's saying right here, and he signed it, so.
Five of them? I was just letting you know what Buddy Carroll said.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to put this on the agenda again then? 'Cause you're not approving it as cash fund, I mean, as gift fund. 'Cause item, item says gift fund.
We can approve with, with, with the exception of changing it to donation fund.
Yeah, amended.
Amendment to donation fund, yeah.
Amendment, said donation.
Who seconded that?
Stand in.
Are you gonna be at this meeting?
Oh, yeah, I'll be there.
Okay.
That's one of my meetings this week.
Yeah.
Grant for seeing business?
Moving here.